Hello, hello.
You're right.
That's part of your job.
Is it? I'll add it to my list. I didn't realize.
I didn't even think about it. Yeah, I used my little key fob to get in.
Save the door was open when I got here.
It's tough.
I'm worried about you.
That's a good trick, though. That's good thinking. Can you hear me over the...
Jessie and Elena loved it. I purposely made some too close together so they all stuck. Oh, man, I'm gonna have to leave these. Her eyes lit up.
That's what I have for dinner. Cookies. It's what's for dinner. I got off one job, started the other job. Oh crap, I gotta go.
I left work early and went home to take a nap, otherwise I would not be there.
Good.
Dragon.
I feel ya. We're getting up to be at the parade in Nesco in tomorrow at nine, and I'm arguing. Hi.
You go to bed till three. Yeah. My adalls are barely open.
Yeah, I'm in the wrong one, aren't I?
Ah, I don't see him. Who's in? I'm gonna have a couple of fun here. Chad's iPad and...
Is the Zoom meeting on here, not the one?
I'm talking to you. No, who's in? That's me. Chad's iPhone.
We'll get started in just a few minutes.
No.
You still want it?
You go to upcoming meetings?
Oh, you're there in the waiting room, sorry.
Oh, okay.
There you are.
There she is.
It's weird, because usually it'll tell me it's going on, but it didn't.
Oh, and it didn't tell you that you were waiting?
It also deleted all my information, so I had to rejoin.
It's like an update or something.
Maybe, yeah.
Everyone about ready?
Yeah.
Oh, you know I want to start early. Nathan, do you know if we'll have a deputy here tonight? Have you heard anything?
Yeah, he's been out for a while.
Okay, it is seven o'clock. I will call to order the July 3 meeting of the United States City Council. Please rise and join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tasha, will you take role for us, please?
Councilwoman Lake.
Present.
Councilwoman Parker.
Present.
Here.
Here. Here. Thank you. We'll start out tonight with the consent agenda. We have our budget versus actuals and minutes from the regular council meeting from six five.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. We'll move on to citizen comments and questions. This is an opportunity to present items not on the regular agenda. Please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Um, we usually will ask for a report from the Sheriff's Department. We have one in our packet. I don't see anyone here. I don't see a Digg representative, so do we have any citizens in the audience that would like to comment this evening? Do we have anyone online that would like to comment this evening? Okay, seeing that, I did receive a written comment that I'm going to read into the record. I was hoping that the deputies were here. Since they're not, I'll just go ahead and forward it to them. It says, "Dear Mayor King, Council, I wanted to write a letter to address some concerns I have regarding the safety of our citizens and their animals. I live on Goucher Street for the last four years, and every Sunday I cringe between the hours of 9:30 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. The churchgoers that attend the service at Amity Christian Church on Goucher frequently speed in excess of 25 miles per hour, both going to and exiting the church parking lot. On several occasions, families, including young children and pets, have to move into their, our yards and/or driveways to avoid speeding drivers. I sent a message to Amity Christian Church via Facebook in April of last year notifying them of this concern in the hopes they would speak to their congregation. They read the message, but never received a reply, and the behavior has not improved. The city has gotten very lucky to not have had a person-versus-vehicle incident thus far. Someday the luck will run out, and an innocent child, pet, or bystander will pay the ultimate price. Kindly, Chad." So, we're all hearing that, and then I think my next plan is just, I'll just forward the email to the deputies, make sure it gets in front of their eyes. I'm trying to think of any other... There's adequate speed signs. There's a stop sign.
Can we move our little temporary one around and maybe plop it there for a while? It's pretty narrow street.
Um, I know, I would be willing to have it, like, in my driveway. We've also had another citizen on that street say that we could use their private property, at least for, like, enforcement stuff, so that might be a place we could put the speed sign.
Where is it at ours? Where is it living now?
Um, at the end of the school year, so just a few weeks ago, it was over by the school. I don't know that they keep it out all the time.
That's a good spot, too, because people are... People are crazy there.
But Nathan, would you mind asking Greg about that? That might just be an eye-opener.
Yeah.
And then also if the deputies are aware, if they can...
If you can use any of our spots up there.
Um, any other citizen comments or questions? I don't believe so.
On that, Mayor King, let's talk about where the other potential property was, just to know. Like you and I talked about.
Oh, yeah.
The other one on Goucher.
Can you just push that farther, maybe? I don't know if it makes that much difference.
Well, yeah, some sort of feedback.
Was there any comments or questions on the sheriff's report in the packet? Okay. Uh, we will move on to old business, of which we have none. And the next item on our agenda is an executive session. Yes.
I missed the citizen.
Oh, yeah. No. You just barely.
Lonely and emotional diner I say. So the sidewalk is long over in, over homeschool. That looks great. They're doing a great job. And I live opposite, and I do have sidewalk there, and then there's gravel between the sidewalk and the pavement. And I wonder whose responsibility is that gravel? Because as the workers are working and they come down, because their equipment is moving on the other side of the cones, some of the larger vehicles are driving through and hitting the gravel that's there, and it doesn't continue on. It's almost pretty much forming a sidewalk right there. And I didn't check before pictures, but from just my eye, it looks like, I mean, losing gravel or gravel that was there is being counted in, and that's not very likely, because it hasn't been moved. So, I'm just wondering, whose responsibility is that? Is it the city's or is it mine to make sure that gravel is...
Um, this is on Rice Lane.
So if it's street side of the sidewalk, it's public right-of-way, which is owner's responsibility, but it's also adjacent to the road. The construction companies also have a responsibility to leave it better or the same as how they found it? Um... No, but that, it, it could be something that was brought up. Hey, are you able to restore this back to what it was before?
Okay, so just talk to some of the workers there while they're there?
Ultimately, yes, it is homeowner's responsibility to upkeep the public right-of-way, but if it's a project that's happening that's causing the issue, I think we, we can try to address it from our side.
Let's talk about it.
Um, yeah, so I can't make any specific promise, but I appreciate you bringing the concern, and we'll look into see what we can do. Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, with that, the Amity City Council will now meet an executive session to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the chief executive officer of the public body, a public officer, employee, or staff member who does not request an open hearing pursuant to ORS 192.6602I. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in executive session. At the end of executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room as there will be action taken in the remainder of our agenda. So, um, if you don't mind waiting in the outer room, you're, we will welcome you back when we're done with this portion.
So it's on the recordings, right?
Um, yeah, we need, just need to make... We will now return to open session of the July 3 Amity City Council meeting at the point of new business. And we'll start with an OLCC liquor license application. I don't want to attempt to...
Why was this one so much longer than all the other?
I know. I was like, holy... Are there two? There's two, yeah. There is a... One of the pages? Okay. Yeah. Saw this already. I was like, how many pages in the first?
This is asking for approval for a liquor license application at 203 Fifth Street. So it's... Um, an appointment for a reading of three cases.
And there is already a liquor license application. Because they're already producing, right? I'm having a liquor license application for Erebus at 203 Fifth Street and G C Wine Company LLC at 203 Fifth Street. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those of a, in favor of approving a liquor license application for Erebus at 203 Fifth Street and G C Wine Company LLC at 203 Fifth Street, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. Um, our next agenda item, action item on the annual evaluation of the city in this. At the six-month mark, and then the... The mayor with council's approval and... A performance evaluation defined goals, performance objectives, and priorities which determine the proper operation of the city and attainment of the city council's policy objectives. As a result of that evaluation, the council may increase employees' base salary in any amount the council and their sole discretion deems appropriate. We, within our executive session, had an employee evaluation, performance evaluation. Um, and so this would just be any follow-up discussion or motions that the council would like to make based on that.
Did you guys want to discuss that at all? I think we noted some really good progress and, um, some, you know, areas that need improvement, but also overall satisfaction and happiness with how it's progressing.
Um, so many comments on being impressed by the growth and learning that has happened in a year. Um, we're really happy to have you here, Nathan, and, you know, all around, it was good. There was highlights. There was places that you're gonna focus on in the next year, but, um, I hope that you're happy with the performance evaluation, because council is happy with the performance that we've seen.
I was.
I move to... Increase. I move to, um, increase... And it just stays.
On the floor, I second. We have a motion and a second to increase the base salary by eight percent with a six-month review with completion of supervisory training opportunities. Raise that up, um, from the base salary eleven to, to the ten percent mark. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes.
Thank you, Nathan.
Yes. Our next item of new business is number 683, psilocybin prohibition. Um, so in November of 2022, we put the moratorium on the ballot, and that prevented psilocybin-related businesses from being established in Amity for two years. That moratorium will expire at the end of this year, so council must decide if we'd like permanent prohibition to go on the ballot, or to simply allow the moratorium to expire. Um, so the attached ordinance would prohibit psilocybin, but it would only take effect after receiving voter approval in November. And so if we, as a council, want this decision to go to the voters, um, ordinance 630... 683, that's before us, needs to be passed by council in order to get that on the ballot for the voters. Discussion, um, questions about the ordinance itself.
Seems pretty straightforward to me.
If everything's as expected, I would ask for a motion to approve, or to read by title only for a first reading.
I move to approve and adopt ordinance number 683, a prohibition of psilocybin-related businesses.
So, second. So first, we have to get a motion to approve by title only.
Oh.
And then we can do it, just as you just did, but first, we have to vote to read it by title only.
I apologize.
I move to approve reading by title only. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve by title only.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please signify by saying no.
Sorry. I can't vote twice.
For the record.
Nor do I want to.
All ayes. Everyone voted aye. Um, motion passes. I will now ask you to repeat your motion, um...
Do, does one of us need to read?
Yeah.
By title. I, I'm sorry, I can't do that.
Okay.
Ordinance number 683, an ordinance declaring a ban on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products. I move to approve and adopt the ordinance number 683, a prohibition of psilocybin-related businesses.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve and adopt ordinance number 683, a prohibition on psilocybin-related businesses. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Passes unanimously. Um, so we'll see that again at the next meeting for a second reading? Okay. Next on our agenda is Resolution 2024-09, psilocybin voter referral. Um, so this is the exhibit showing the ordinance and then what would go on, what would go to the county to be on the ballot come November.
I move to approve Resolution 2024-09, referring to the voters of Amity, the question of prohibiting psilocybin-related businesses.
Second.
I actually had something I want to discuss on that first, if that's okay.
Yeah, me too.
Sure, I can always have that. Go ahead.
Um, some of the language in the ballot measure, I'd like to go over a little bit. Um, I feel like... Some of it needs to be simplified a little bit more, because to me, it reads a little like the council wants to ban psilocybin, and so we're putting this measure out, rather than the council really wants the city to decide whether to ban it. How so?
So I have, like, um, four word changes that makes it sound differently.
Right. Okay.
If you...
Yeah.
Don't mind hearing. So it's in the explanatory statement, second paragraph, and the sentence that starts, "The city of Amity City Council has adopted an ordinance prohibiting the establishment of psilocybin-related businesses within the city in order to refer this measure to the voters."
That sounds better.
Yep.
Does that... Just because that, this is what we need to do to, in order to be able to...
Because that's what we want. We want the voters to decide.
Yeah. Um, so instead, as, as a result?
Right.
Is that okay?
Yes.
That's exactly what I'm thinking.
Yes. Perfect. That sounds much better.
Um, was there anything else?
I think the only other thing that I was kind of, I feel could be simplified, is the very last line, "If approved, this measure would prohibit," say, a yes vote would prohibit.
Oh, yeah.
Rather than...
Yeah, that makes it even, yeah, I like that, actually.
I think that's better. A yes vote, because that's very clear.
I like that.
And if we wanted to go a step further, a no vote would, and then... Because then you'd have to say, "Allow the opportunity for thisness and this and this."
A yes vote, because, yeah.
Yeah.
But that is confusing to me. Because it's, it's, if it's approved, not like your, like...
Yeah, your vote doesn't make that happen.
Yeah.
It's the measure actually passing.
So...
Oh, that's true, because it's not necessarily a vote.
If passing, or?
If passed. Which is the same thing as if approved.
Approved is more like a council word, though, whereas like past...
Passing is clearly voters are passing.
But I know what you're saying, like, some of the statements are like that. A yes vote means this.
We are trying to guide them on how to vote, so they need to understand implications of a yes vote.
And say if you're, if you're worried about...
Right, because I've seen ballot measures where they say, "Yes vote does this, no vote does this."
Exactly.
And it's very clear.
I love that saying.
I know, I, I feel like writing the, what a no vote does would be hard to...
Right.
Do without, like...
Well, because there's like a laundry list of...
There is, yeah. I mean, because a no vote, you know...
Allows this, this and this.
It allows it, but it doesn't mean it's gonna happen. It doesn't necessarily mean this.
Could be shutting out state revenue, but we don't know. State revenue, we haven't done anything with it yet, right? There's a lot of...
What if you just said, "If voter approved"?
Yeah.
Just add voter.
Yeah, I like that. If voter approved, then psilocybin, da-da-da-da-das.
I think that's more clear.
Prohibited within...
I think that's more clear.
Uh, I'm a little bit. It's not quite as like, your yes vote is, but... Yeah.
I like that, that last one.
Yeah.
Simp, simple.
Anything in, any of the other pieces outside of the explanatory statement? Summary of the... Or should we change approval of this measure to voter approval of this measure?
I like voter approval. It clearly puts the onus on the voter.
It wouldn't hurt.
It what?
It wouldn't hurt to just...
It doesn't, yeah.
And then it really is, like, reiterating, "That's why we put it out there. Let the people decide." And then it really is like reiterating, that's why we put it out there, let the people decide. For the explanatory statement, though, then it has the first and last sentences being, I mean, they're the same.
I don't think it's bad to reiterate.
That's true, like for anyone that says, oh, they said the same thing twice, it might take someone else reading it two times to understand. So just leave it.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Okay. So do we add voter there as well, as the very first word?
I don't think it hurts, yeah. It doesn't hurt, let's do it.
Okay.
That was all I had.
So we had a motion and second on the floor, but I didn't.
My motion. I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh nine, referring to the voters of Amity, the question of prohibiting psilocybin-related businesses with changes as noted.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh nine, referring the voters of Amity, the question of prohibiting psilocybin-related businesses with the noted changes? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes.
I was waiting for that.
Our next item of business is ordinance six eighty-four, local marijuana tax. Nathan, do you mind going over this?
Mm-hmm, I was gonna ask if I could add some more interesting slash trivial background as well. So for the marijuana tax, Oregon state law does allow municipalities to establish a local tax on the sale of marijuana items. As far as I'm aware, previously, Amity has not imposed a retail tax on the sale of marijuana items, but would like to do so now. And the maximum of that tax is three percent. And if we could market it as a revenue for the general fund, or if there's a specific fund that we would like it to go to, we could do that as well. And then refer it to the voters of Amity. The kind of trivial items that I, that I've found recently that are interesting, in the online code, it says that Amity already has a marijuana tax. I tracked down which ordinance that piece came from and somehow the city of Ashland ordinance got submitted
Oh, no.
with ours and got missed. So confirmed that it's not city of Amity ordinance that establishes a local tax there. And then the other thing, oh, when I called Canobros to ask how they would feel about a tax, he was pretty sure that he had already been paying it for the city of Amity. And so I told him to go back and check his tax returns and that we would double-check with the Department of Revenue, that they hadn't been collecting it on our behalf and not ever sending it our way, but he, he was like, well, maybe I'll get a big tax refund, so.
He had previously mentioned that this was the only
Right.
store that didn't collect it, so it might just be part of their routine.
It, it's part of their, yeah, their accounting process, so. They're all used to paying it, so they build it in.
Yeah.
So, yes, other than, other than that, yeah, we can now refer to, sorry about exhibit B, color scope of work. The, yeah, there's the ordinance and then the resolution, similar to the psilocybin, how there's an ordinance to refer to the voters, then the resolution with the same thing and then the ballot language.
I'm curious.
So do we need to read the ordinance twice again?
Yeah, we'll have to go through. I just have a question for council, if there's interest in specifying where those funds would go or if general fund is okay.
We talked about the street fund. I think that is a good faith effort on the council to help direct funds to always be there for the streets that are always going to need repair.
And the streets are always the number one complaint.
We do our surveys. But in designated into streets, it can also go to sidewalks and store drains and.
Are attached to the streets?
Those are all within the street fund, though, right? Yeah.
Now, the other thing is there may be other opportunities in the city to tax that we could do street funds with as well.
I understand the merit in wanting as much flexibility. If something came up, you want it to be flexible, but the thing is, we looked, this is my personal opinion, we looked at the street pavement plan and we know the maintenance it needs and we know that if we don't have significantly more to put into it every single year, we will never make progress, it will continue to deteriorate. And so.
And we're not always going to be the same council who identifies that as a need.
And so I don't think we'll ever come to a place where our streets and sidewalks are so good that we're like, oh, man, we have to spend this marijuana.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen.
And if we do that, then that's a problem for the future to solve. But I also don't think that fiscally, we are in a position where the general fund needs that three percent so bad to stretch for someplace else.
I was gonna add, if it's helpful, he estimated the three percent tax to be around twenty thousand.
I was gonna ask if we have a.
I, I didn't see numbers and, yeah, like I said, that, that wasn't him looking at numbers either, that was just his.
I think. I know when he came to council and spoke, he said it would probably be around thirty thousand, but then the the rate went down, so that's in line with what he originally said as well.
I would twenty thousand to the street fund would be great. Yeah, and it's also a good thing to communicate to the citizens, too, that this, this goes here, it's like gas tax goes to streets and stuff. So having a specific, we tax this and this is where it goes and look how helpful it is.
And I've tried to convey in different situations that we are trying to explore every option. And so again, this is putting it to the voters. If they don't want this specific retail type of retail establishment taxed, that's okay, that's their choice. If they don't want it to go to the streets, that's fine, but it does show that council's trying to take some action that we're able to problem-solve a need that we know we have. And I think there's a lot of worth in that. But I would also look a little bit to staff of like need, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't feel like currently we need the flexibility of twenty thousand dollars in the general fund.
I don't think it offers that much of a cushion that it matters to the general fund.
Because we can always take it from the general fund and move it into streets. But it. Anything else, but it's not, it's the, again, with the perception and the we're trying to make a decision for the future.
Right.
Yeah. Proactive rather than reactive.
Yeah, streets is the number one complaint, we never hear the end of it, and as soon as we start to do something, we hear more complaints.
So this table, this, this side of me, I want to hear what you have to say.
I wouldn't be the outlier. I don't think it's wise to, to pigeonhole that directly and when we don't know what the future holds for other needs, it's, it just doesn't feel wise to. I mean, I'm perfectly fine with making it deliberate, this is our intent and what we want to do with this. And we do that every year as often as we can, but I'm just, I don't wanna, that, that money isn't specifically for that purpose, I mean, I would like it to go there. I'm not disagreeing with any of your statements here that way, but to, to put it in ordinance to force future council, and we don't know what their future issues are going to be, doesn't seem wise in my opinion.
So that can, could the future council opt to change all of those?
We'd have to take it back to the voter, back to the voters.
Which is a year process.
But it's not being ordered, just in the budget.
But again.
That does, that does leave it open, though, five years from now, right? Tasha and I moved on, new council seats, right? People forget.
They don't know anything about it.
I don't think we'll forget about street issues.
And that's fair, too.
Well, the citizens won't.
The other thing, you could always get rid of the street fee if, if it ever came to a point where you had enough money, but I, I'd say there's also the flex, yeah, they're all good arguments.
Yeah, so that is, you know, five years from now, will whoever's sitting here know that that's where that group is supposed to go?
Is there a way to do that without making it ordinance, is that a compromise?
Not that sticks.
Well, I'm not saying it actually has a stick, but I mean, something that stays in the conversation. Maybe there's no way to do it, I'm just asking a question.
I think not, because the way that this ordinance is, it would actually be within the ballot measure, letting people know that is what they're voting for. Right?
Right, and if you just put it to the general fund and say, hey, each year, we want to transfer that three percent out, that only stays as long as the council you have there, is there. I just feel like if the voter, if they see it's going to the state general fund, they're gonna be like, ugh.
Right, that's where I am.
There's collecting taxes on this.
Yeah, no, I, I'd like to see it more specific, I think that puts us more good faith with the voters, that we're actually doing something very specific with the tax.
And I understand what you're saying where we are, like, but I'm gonna use the word sidebars in a more positive manner, like, yes, it could come back to bite us later, but it's also saying, we're not just taking your money and doing whatever we want with it, we're promising you that it's going to this, because if you listen to people.
Well, then they can see it in action, too.
And you will always need twelve thousand dollars.
You will always need the money in streets, always.
But when it comes down to like water or streets, we would probably be apt to choose water, if water's what we need.
Exactly what I'm saying, I mean, you don't know what the future holds and that twenty dol, twenty grand or thirty, however much it is, could be a difference maker. Yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah, I wouldn't make that. I wouldn't make that decision in my own household, I'm not gonna recommend it here.
My thought is, though, and it's kind of alluded to in this, if we put this to the voters as the general fund and then it doesn't pass, are we always going to wonder, oh, if we would have, if we would have said it was going to streets, it would have passed? Like, do you all think it's more likely to pass if it's specific? Because that's something to think about, also, if it doesn't pass, we get no tax to go anywhere.
I absolutely think if it is, were it to streets and sidewalks, that it absolutely makes a difference. That's me, though.
I think it does.
And just another to that thought, we now put sixty thousand dollars to repaired maintenance. If we had, knowing this twenty thousand was coming in, we could. We could only put forty thousand, and not that we're going to, right, like the, the, right now, we want to increase that as much as possible. But if things got to the point where they were really tight, we say, well, that twenty thousand or that three percent is guaranteed and then we only need to find this much, or this year, our, our repaired maintenance is going to rely solely on marijuana tax revenue and nothing else, because we don't have it anywhere else.
Good one. That's something that's sort of guaranteed, that's always a need.
Minimum.
Minimum. I mean, that's easily just potholes for the year.
Yeah, that, that is about what we do in just potholes, so at least it would be from now until the voters repeal this, we would have whatever that revenue is.
Our pothole revenue.
I love it.
Pothole fund.
Bottle tax.
Yeah, I know. It's not a bad thing.
Hot for potholes. I love it.
It's a double entendre.
So maybe we won't be able to get to full agreement, but is there anything, any other? Anything else you feel like you want to talk through? So if someone is ready to make a motion, we'll actually have to go through that again.
Read by ordinance? I mean, read by title only? Is there a problem because it says general fund in it?
It would be part of the motion.
Okay.
And before we, before anything else, I just want to note, the News Register did an article about this, but they cited our meeting as on Tuesday and they cited a three-dollar tax.
Oh!
And it was published yesterday, so.
Good for the record, you've got your fees.
The News Register did an article just on this meeting in general, but when they referred to this, they said that our meeting in general was July second and that we were trying to instate a three-dollar tax.
Wow, great proofreading there.
Just something I noticed today. But this is actually asking for the three percent, which is the maximum allowed in the state of Oregon.
So can we approve by title if we're making a correction?
No. So whoever, whoever, how does that work?
Motion to bring back the authority and then some level of changes, and then you have to.
No, I don't think so, so I think you just have to read it all and then you make a motion to approve the ordinance with the change. And then specify the change after it's already been read. Does that sound right?
Yeah, we just have to read the whole thing. And include the changes. And include the change.
Not in the reading. You read it as is and then, and then you motion to approve, you make the changes. Are there any volunteers for reading?
I'm happy to, if you'd like.
Sure, have the honor.
Ordinance number six eighty-four.
We need a motion to.
No. No, because.
An ordinance of the city of Amity imposing a three percent tax on the sale of marijuana items by a marijuana retailer. Whereas ORS four seven five B dot four nine one provides that a city council may adopt an ordinance to be referred to the voters that imposes up to a three percent tax on the sale of marijuana items by a marijuana retailer in the area subject to the jurisdiction of the city. And whereas the city council wants to impose a tax on the sale of marijuana items by a marijuana retailer in the area subject to the jurisdiction of the city, now therefore, based on the foregoing, the city of Amity ordains as follows. Definitions, marijuana item has the meaning given the term, given that term in ORS four seven five B period oh one five, parentheses nineteen, parentheses. Marijuana retailer means a person who sells marijuana items to a consumer in the state. Retail sale price means the price paid for a marijuana, marijuana item excluding tax to a marijuana retailer buyer on behalf of a consumer of the marijuana item. Tax imposed, as described in ORS four seven five B four nine one, the city of Amity hereby imposes a tax of three percent on the retail sale price of marijuana items by a marijuana retailer in the area subject to the jurisdiction of the city. Collection, the tax shall be collected at the point of sale of a marijuana item by a marijuana retailer at the time at which the retail sale occurs and remitted by each marijuana retailer that engages. and remitted by each marijuana retailer that engages in the retail sale of marijuana items. The tax shall then be remitted to the Oregon Department of Revenue on behalf of the city of Amity. Interest and penalty: Interest shall be added to the overall tax amount due at the same rate established under ORS three oh five dot two two zero for each month or fraction of a month from the time the return to the Oregon Department of Revenue was originally required to be filed by the marijuana retailer to the time of payment. If the marijuana retailer fails to file a return with the Oregon Department of Revenue or pay the taxes required, a penalty shall be imposed upon the marijuana retailer in the same manner an amount provided under ORS three one four dot four zero zero. Every penalty imposed and any interest that accrues becomes a part of the financial obligation required to be paid by the marijuana retailer and remitted to the Oregon Department of Revenue. Taxes, interest and penalties transferred to the city of Amity by the Oregon Department of Revenue will be distributed to the city's general fund. Um, if at any time a marijuana retailer fails to remit any amount owed in taxes, interest or penalties, the Oregon Department of Revenue is authorized to enforce collection on behalf of the city of the owed amount in accordance with ORS four seven five B dot seven zero zero to four seven five B dot seven six zero. Any agreement between the Oregon Department of Revenue and the city of Amity under ORS three oh five dot six two zero and any applicable administrative rules adopted by the Oregon Department of Revenue. Referral: This ordinance shall be referred to the electors of Amity at the next statewide general election on November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Effective date: This ordinance takes effect and becomes operative thirty days after the day on which it is approved by a majority of voters.
I move to approve by reading, I move to approve the reading of ordinance six eighty-four with the correction in section D that the funds go to the street fund.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adopt the first reading of ordinance six eighty-four um, to include a change in section D to replace the words general fund with street fund. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those opposed, please signify by saying no.
No.
Motion passes. I lost my words there. Um, next we have the follow-up. Right?
Yep.
Yes. So this would be the resolution to support the ordinance that we just passed.
If I can add a quick note that I was reminded of while reading the ordinance. Um, I did reach out to the Oregon Department of Revenue and they have model agreements that we can go through. They'll get one set up and ready for us to, to work toward as soon as the, uh, this is passed by the voters, if it is. So that, that agreement will take place after, after the tax is in place.
I move to approve and adopt ordinance six eighty-four imposing a local tax on the sale of marijuana items.
Why, where are you reading that? I just lost it.
On the page after seven. What do you want it?
I, I'd say, I think the, so the motion on the floor was to approve and adopt the ordinance.
We already passed that. We need one for the resolution.
This is the resolution. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. It's resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten.
No, we have to approve the ordinance because all we did was a reading.
You only have to make the first one if you want it by title only. The way I read it.
We still have to do the resolution. We haven't done the resolution. We just did the reading.
But that's what your motion was.
The motion that I read was to adopt ordinance six.
Yeah, and that's what.
Thirty-eight.
Oh, you're right. You're right. You're right. You're right. Cause you read the whole, you're right.
Yeah, so we didn't need one to read it. I, I did change your words, but only by saying I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance six thirty-eight. Okay, yeah, no, that's fine.
All right, so I withdraw that and say, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four ten referring to the electors of Amity, the question of imposing a three percent tax on the sale of marijuana items within Amity. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten. Any further discussion? All those in favor of referring to the electors of Amity, the question of imposing a three percent tax on the sale of marijuana items with Amity, please signify by saying aye.
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 What?
Um, was there a change wanted in the explanatory statement? Currently it says there are no restrictions on how the city may use the revenues generated by this tax. So if it was going to street fund.
Yes.
There would be, so, sorry.
Yes. No, no, that's.
I found that too late, so.
I did too. I scanned for general fund and didn't see.
Same.
We used different language.
I did too. Yeah, I didn't see anything in that.
Okay, would you remind withdrawing that motion again?
Do you want me to just move?
No. I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four ten referring to the elector, electors of Amity, the question of imposing a three percent tax on the sale of marijuana items within Amity with the change that the funds go to the street fund and not the general fund in section.
Explainatory statement.
D in the explanatory statement, or no, just in the explanatory statement, sorry.
Is that enough direction to staff that we can pass it as such? Okay.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second to approve for resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten referring to the electors of Amity, the question of imposing a three percent tax on the sale of marijuana items with Amity with the change to the explanatory statement to, um, explain the funds being used for the street fund and not for any general purpose. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. We are going to move on to item G, domain name. This is all you.
Okay. Um, over the last few years, there's been a wider push for governments to transition to a dot gov domain. Um, you've seen several other cities around in the area make that move. Um, as we bring on our new cybersecurity partners, this is a good time. I, I also received word like a day or two ago that we did in fact receive the cybersecurity grants that I applied for a while ago. One of which was to help fund the transition to a dot gov domain. Um, and so that would change it, you know, instead of CI dot Amity dot OR dot US, it would be a phrase, you know, whether it's Amity Oregon, city of Amity Oregon, um, Amity OR, um, one of those, dot gov. Um, but I brought this motion to ask if there was a preferred variation that you'd want after your emails. Um, this would be our new website as well. The, the goal would be to get all of that to be the same domain instead of having, um, cityofamityoregon.org and then our emails be different. They would all be the same under whatever it is, dot gov.
Have you looked at all to see what might be available? Are they all available?
They're all available, yeah.
Being specific about Amity Oregon, either city of Amity Oregon or Amity Oregon would be helpful because there's another Amity.
It, it. The dot gov rules require that in order to apply, that it has to uniquely apply, yeah, it says names that uniquely apply to your organization, so.
I know it's longer, but I like the city of.
I like city of Amity also.
It feels more official than rather just like someone's.
I, I agree with that. I do not like the Amity OR dot gov. It's just not specific enough, especially there being another Amity.
Typing out cityofamityoregon dot, but that's a lot.
Your computer is going to pick it up.
Oh, yeah.
Real quick. Um, and I like it because that's what I type in when I'm looking for like a city's website, not their tourism or not their parks and rec.
I guess that's true. City of Amity.
City of Amity, you go to their local government website.
Yeah, cause that, I mean, there's no mistaking that.
Either way, I'm hoping it'll be easier than saying over the phone CI dot Amity dot OR US.
I finally memorized.
I like city of Amity Oregon.
Well, you're welcome to make a motion.
It seems like a lot. I guess I'm a contrary guy today, but. It seems like a lot. I like Amity org dot gov, simple.
I feel like it's.
So that would be, all of that would be at the end of our emails or just dot gov?
Yeah.
It wouldn't be the CI dot whatever stuff that I have to look.
No, that would all be at the end.
So we had this in our business at the very beginning, whether to use the initials of the business or the whole name. And while some days I do regret using the whole name, it also identifies us. If it was just our initials, it's, it doesn't have the same impact, doesn't have the same memory retention because you're just saying initials rather than the business name. And if you're giving it out over the phone, you can just say city of Amity all in one word. And like, it's not all of the like dots.
Could we get rid of the city of and just do Amity Oregon?
Yeah.
Dot gov?
But I feel like that could be for anything. Like the mayor said, you know, you could type that in for Amity Tourism, Amity Hotels, Amity.
But the dot gov, because I mean, city of, trying to type that before two is just.
What are some of the other cities, Jim?
McMinnville is McMinnville, Oregon.
Most people are just the city and the state.
Yarmouth County is Yarmouth, Yarmouth County.
Yeah.
Dot gov.
Let's just do that then.
There was, I think, is it Hood River? I think there's a city of Hood River, trying to. I did look up a whole bunch of them and tried to see who had what.
Most people are either just the city and the cit- the city and the name, or they're the name and the state.
Tasha, what do you think? What would be helpful?
I would try to think like other cities, like Monmouth and that's okay.
Yeah, so Hood River doesn't have Oregon in it, right? Cause Hood River is a unique enough name, I guess.
Right.
So they're just cityofhoodriver.gov.
What, what about city of Amity? Is that?
No, because there's other Amities.
But if they're not using it.
Independence is still the CI dot independence. I think Monmouth might be as well. Yeah, that was the trend. And then now the, in the last three or four years, the federal government has made dot gov's. Dot gov used to be expensive or something. Dot gov has now become free, um, and secured through the federal government.
But only.
My concern with Amity dot gov is that when people get on there, there's no way for them to know for sure what Amity they're on.
Well, it would have to be.
It has to have Oregon.
It has to have Oregon in there.
Well, do you like Amity Oregon dot gov or cityofamity Oregon dot gov?
I like just Amity Oregon dot gov. That's me.
I like that.
And Dayton is just Dayton Oregon dot gov.
Yeah, I think we just do Amity Oregon dot gov.
Let's do it.
I'm fine with that. But I do, we do, someone needs to make a motion so we can.
I move to direct the city administrator to request the preferred domain Amity Oregon dot gov and begin the transition process.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to direct the city administrator to request the preferred domain Amity Oregon dot gov and begin the transition process. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. Um, next item is engineering contract amendment. Um, I'll just ask right off the bat, I don't see the USDA approval came through. Is that going to be an issue?
I, no, I asked them and they've, they've given written approval via email, but they want to be the last signature. They like to be the last signature.
Okay, so this is, uh, amendment number six to the owner engineer agreement and it's because we have extended this project by six or seven months, so um, the engineering costs and the weekly meetings and the work performed by our engineering team has and will increase over that time. Um, so Keller's proposed a budget increase of forty-five thousand dollars. City staffer recommends approval of this proposed amendment. Additional service performed by the engineer, modification of service, modification of payment, modification to times for rendering service. And it's good through the end of December. Um, and that should get us through to, or I'm sorry, the sixteenth of December and that should get us through our needs. Keller on the USDA project? Any questions or concerns?
I mean, we have a choice here, right?
We need them. We always have a choice, but it would bring other.
And frankly, I'm not surprised. I, I mean.
Yeah. I'll ask her a motion to approve.
I move to approve the proposed amendment for additional engineering services and authorize the city administrator to sign the agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the proposed amendment for additional engineering services and authorize the city administrator to sign the agreement. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. Next we have ODOT Carbon Reduction Program Grant Application. Nathan, you want to give us the rundown on this as well?
Yeah, I, uh, so ODOT recently reached out because they were extending their grant application deadline for the Carbon Reduction Program. Uh, this is a grant program specifically trying to, you know, convert more resources to, to more renewable resources, um, and reduce carbon footprint. Um, one of the projects that they recommended doing, or that, that, that was the grant manager at ODOT recommended was new vehicles, new electric vehicles. Um, and as we have two public works trucks nearing, nearing or past the end of life, depending on how you look at them. Um, I, I was hoping that this would be a good time to submit an application for two electric public works trucks. Um, trucks run around seventy-five thousand each, um, but would be a good replacement for our current vehicles. So. I, in order to apply for the grant through ODOT, I need a resolution in support of that grant.
Where would we charge them and what is like the annual cost associated? And do you know like versus gas?
Um, oh man, that's a good question. I, I haven't looked into the numbers of electricity versus gas. In general, I understand it to be much cheaper. Um, we certainly spend a lot on fuel. As far as the charger, the, they recommended, the grant manager recommended not including it in this in the grant application itself because the level two chargers are two thousand dollars. Um, and all, all of the strings attached with a federal grant application. Would have meant like an environmental review and all that stuff of where exactly we're putting it. Um, so he said, just buy the level two chargers, set them up, you know, in your public works office and, um, and, and so they would be able to. We, we would coordinate with PGE, you know, to get them installed, but probably just at public works office. Um, and then they could plug them in there, charge them overnight. Um, the, uh, the range on the, the Ford F-150 Lightning, which is the newer, you know, electric kind of utility truck, um, it's a little over three hundred miles. Um, and so that's more than enough for their daily usage. Uh, and then for any, you know, heavy towing or heavy equipment needs, we still have our, our new Chevy, I, I don't, is it diesel or is it gas? I don't know. Um, but either way, it's heavy hauler, um, and so could handle those needs, right? If I need to go pick up water bottles in the middle of the night. Um, that, that one will still work for those kinds of needs, so.
Do we know the lifespan of the batteries and how expensive they are to replace? Cause I know of a lot of people who are already getting rid of their electric vehicles after.
Because I know of a lot of people who are already getting rid of their electric vehicles after four or five years of use because the replacement of the battery is like twenty thousand dollars. And I don't want to see us get hit with. We could buy a used truck for the cost of having just to replace a battery. And then also is our fire department set up to put out battery fires?
Yes, they are.
Excellent. Because that's another major concern.
Glad to know about the battery fires. The, as far as the life maintenance on them. I did have that discussion with the, the grant manager. He was fairly familiar because he has his own electric vehicle, right? But we didn't dive too deep into the research. In general, maintenance overall is a lot less because you're not maintaining an engine on the regular. It does seem to have the bigger, you know, cost, the one-time cost. I'm not sure how long the battery lasts, but I think he said, he estimated it around ten years. Is what they were estimating on the newer electric vehicles anyway. And so. My, my hope was that with grant money, right, if I was given the hundred and fifty thousand. That the, the, the maintenance later on would be either manageable or we could revisit it in ten years and see if it's worth selling the trucks and, and moving to something else.
Does it would be a recommendation for?
Right, right.
Well, I think if, if the one-time investment into two brand-new trucks for us was under twenty thousand dollars, it would be important to like continue building up that fund, just like we had anticipated doing anyway, just for the future.
Well, and there's lots of other equipment that public works would like to replace or purchase. And so, yes, those funds would still be heavily utilized. It would just hopefully not be the daily driver vehicles.
But personally, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't try to pursue a grant.
I don't see a downside to it.
But how many vehicles do we have pickups that are needed every day total?
So currently, we have three kind of daily driver pickups. We have two old Fords, one that's a two thousand one. I want to say the other one is a two thousand eight. And then, so that's Greg, the public works supervisor named Gary. And then Clint currently drives the newer Chevy. And that one was twenty, twenty-two or three. It's brand new. And then we also have an old Ford dump truck, but that one doesn't get used daily. I have three public works employees and they use the other three trucks.
My concern with electric is that we're in an emergency situation and we don't have electricity. At least gas-powered vehicles, there's ways to get gas put back in them. And can public works function in that environment with two electrical vehicles that could potentially be dead? Is one vehicle enough?
Are we keeping a gas, the, the gas one?
Well, my, I know we're keeping one gas, it sounds like at least, but is that enough in a situation like that? Because my guess is that their services and their reach is going to be further than one vehicle would allow. I mean, we'd be asking them to use personal vehicles at that point, probably.
Well, I guess here's my thing. Just because we apply for the grant and get two, maybe get two electric vehicles, doesn't mean that we have to get rid of all of our gas ones.
Well, that was, that was how it was proposed, was as a replacement.
Oh, it is that we have to get rid of them?
It's proposed as a, as a replacement.
Got you.
We don't necessarily, I, I don't know that the grant would require us to get rid of them. The carbon reduction piece would want us to not use the gas trucks, at least not as much as we're using the new electric one. Kind of an answer to your question though, they, the, the newer Chevy has been in the shop for the last two weeks, right? We recently got it back, but that has all of their tools. And they were still able and perfectly able to respond to the water line break on Sherman Avenue the other day. And so they, they got out there, dug it open and then realized that all of their tools and some of the other stuff was needed on the other truck. But I mean, they, they had tools in the shop. They, it just took a second of adjusting to respond.
Right.
And, and I think that would be the same thing here is if, if for some reason you somehow had two dead batteries, it would take a minute to respond, right? But they would, they would figure it out.
But I think what he's bringing up is important. It would be nice to have, like if, if we had those two, have two more, even if they're part, don't auction off everything else.
Right, yeah. I mean, it's a valid point. Absolutely. Don't get rid of the backups.
Or have a battery backup that they can charge with.
Oh, yeah.
And then there's.
Well, there's not really such a thing.
I mean, there's generators.
Generators.
Generators. It takes hours.
It would take a big generator.
A big generator running for.
Well, and something I also, I guess it was on the waterfront, but there's also grant opportunities through FEMA and emergency management to address that sort of thing. I don't know how, you know, what exactly that is, but when we're looking, it doesn't necessarily have to be a, our investment into that. There's literally more carbon reduction dollars that have already thought ahead and been like, well, in an emergency, you would need this. So we've also allocated twenty billion dollars for grants in this capacity.
I, I just know it, because I have a buddy who's on, out on fire call right now. And I forget what state he's in, but there are all four services required to use electric vehicles right now. And so they have like eight generators in camp running twenty-four seven to charge vehicles.
It's crazy.
Well, where's the carbon reduction on this whole deal? I mean, you've got to be kidding me.
That's crazy.
So I, I think we need to be reasonable about it. I mean, if, if we can manage, I don't think we should eliminate all of our gas-powered vehicles because there's a reliability there that may not always be there with electric vehicles. I mean, I think for day-to-day use, when everything's good, fantastic. I think it's a no-brainer. I'm, I'm just concerned about the extreme circumstances, which unfortunately we need to be prepared for as much as possible.
We've already seen them.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I'm a hundred percent in agreement with that.
I'm curious on policy, just Amity's policy in general for like turning vehicles to auction or selling them. Is that something that staff can just do as needed?
Open up and seal bids and.
But does that come before council? Do those type of, okay, that, I guess that's what I was, like, we would know.
Yeah.
Just curious. I'm not hearing any major objections to the application. Do I have a motion on?
Do we need to change the wording in the grant application? Because that's a deal breaker for me if we have to get rid of what we have, which is required.
I don't, nothing I understood was that we had to get rid of this.
It doesn't in the resolution.
The resolution is just for the submission of an application too. And say, and so if I did get a grant offered, right, then the grant agreement would come back to council too.
We would have to agree to all the terms and accept it.
Yeah, that would be even more details, so.
I move to pass resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eleven, resolution authorizing application for the ODOT Carbon Reduction Program Grant.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven. Any further discussion? All those in favor of authorizing the application for ODOT Carbon Reduction Program Grant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Okay. Motion passes. I take it for granted, you're really good at hearing and knowing. The next item I actually don't have.
I don't have in my packet either.
Yeah, so you.
The SCA grant?
No, the Spirit Mountain. So Spirit Mountain Community Fund Grant is in the agenda, but not in the packet.
Yeah, I don't have that either.
So are you actually going to strike it as an action item?
Uh, yes, it doesn't need to be a specific action item. I can.
Keep it as, as discussion item?
Yeah, I would discuss that in my administrative report.
So we will move on to K, which is Small City A Lot Make Grant Application.
It's going to be this one's all you.
It is?
I'll let you give the rundown.
Okay, I'll try to be fast. The ODOT SCA grant is, the grant cycle is currently open. As soon as we are, have completed the project on Rice Lane, which those sidewalks are coming along quite well. They're making great progress. We're, we're excited for that. So as soon as those are done, then, and I get invoiced for it, then we can submit a new SCA grant application. The, the question kind of here is in the past, right, the SCA grant has been used to fund sidewalks. I'm not sure what it's necessarily been used before that. I, there, there's been a lot of concerns about just the pavement itself in the city. And anytime we add, you know, sidewalks, curb and gutter, storm drains, it makes small areas a lot more expensive. Whereas if we're just doing pavement or replacing, you know, pavement and then the base below it and repairing the base where needed, the money can go a lot farther. And so I, I believe if we, you know, use the two hundred and fifty thousand from an SCA grant to just do pavement repairs. I hesitate to be overly optimistic. We could get most of Enos and then possibly even like second part of Stanley and kind of extend out from there and figure out, you know, where the worst areas would be. But, but I, I wanted to run it past council, whether you wanted to see the SCA grant be used towards building new areas with up to standard, right? That would include curb and gutter, storm drain, all the, you know, proper engineering and designed areas up to the, the transportation plan standards. Or simply use it to try to catch up on some pavement maintenance.
I feel like that's a really tough one, especially calling out Enos because there is a lot of drainage issues on that street. And there is an accessibility factor because there are citizens who need mobility devices on that street. So it is tricky to just say, we're just going to do your road, but it's also a great opportunity to do the road. That's terrible. It's a really tough call.
Yeah, my, my garage floods every fall. Because the storm drain just kind of vomits it into my garage.
But I mean, that's, that's a big chunk that we would be able to do at the minimum. Yeah, it, it wouldn't be the standard, but.
It may actually make some of the drainage issues worse.
Right.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
If the road is holding less water, yeah. Or if it's, I mean, right now it's more permeable probably than brand-new asphalt.
Brand-new asphalt will not be.
Probably dispersing a little bit better than, rather than being run off and directed to certain directions.
Right.
I mean, I don't know for sure, but I would assume that.
Those potholes right now are holding the lot.
I know.
The storm drains on the east side are kind of intermittent. Well, not even storm drains, just the bar ditches along there. And then the culvert that runs underneath Second Street along Enos has about that much space and it's culvert about that big. And then it just kind of goes into nowhere. It kind of needs to be done all the way down the end of the street. It may be directed where we've got that pump thing at the end of Enos, kind of like down there. I think the pump is what is the overflow for the lagoons. I don't know.
You might be talking about the asphalt, but is there a pump like actually making noise there or?
Yeah, because I dug through the berry vines wanting to figure out what.
So something to consider too is this calls out very specifically, like simply replace the eighteen with the asphalt. We can also kind of give some discretion in the application process and the engineering process to be like, what would work best for this if council's expectation is not that it's fully built out everything?
What's the best utilization of the money?
Of the money for that. And be like, and us be okay whether that is like, well, really, it's just to do all this asphalt and redig these ditches. Or it's to do a little less asphalt and make sure that there's a curb on this very low section, you know, like.
The problem that I've run into, and, and I, I actually asked about this in a, the city administrator meeting, and the city administrators were pretty mixed. I asked if we should be using, you know, or if they felt there was a requirement to use grant money to build the road up to standards. Right? Because if we go up to standards, right, then we're talking, I believe the, the local road width is thirty-four feet wide. And so we would be doubling the width of Enos. I, I don't even know what the survey looks like right there, right? That'd probably be asking for ride away from, you know, people. And so it, you could do like half of the street, you could do, you could try to section it up. But essentially, the philosophy comes down to if, if this, is the city willing to build the standards, right? Can we require developers to build the standards? Or are we just doing a rehabilitation? And then maybe it's not new construction, it's not new development.
I think if it's not a full build out, it would be considered rehabilitation.
Yes. And, and where that line gets crossed is, is kind of what's up for debate. And, and ultimately, I, I want it to be what you guys feel is best because I, I don't have any real concerns either way. But it, according to some, if you start digging out, digging ditches, if you start, you know, add a curb here and there, that's not rehabit, rehabilitation anymore. That's improvement, that's development, that's.
The biggest thing is the street, like you said, accessibility. Did have a handicap person that had a really tough time getting up and down that street. And it's, it's hard to walk on.
But even new asphalt would be safer.
Right.
And I will just call out our current CSA did not build Rice Lane to full transportation plan standards. We looked at the situation where the fence was, how much clearance they needed, and decided to go with twelve-foot lanes, not sixteen-foot lanes that would encroach on more of the school property. And that was just a matter of using best judgment at the time because judgment calls had to be made at the time. So I think Nathan is looking for more like council philosophy on what we're okay with.
Minor rehab and some of that funds go to other streets in need because there are a lot of streets in need, so obviously not just Enos.
And I think with how Amity has grown, each street is unique. And I don't think that you can expect.
There isn't a one-size-fill.
Right, to fit the full development code on, on every single one. It'd be nice if it did, but.
But it's like rehabilitate to current need.
Right, yeah.
Based on what's there.
Well, and Enos is a dead-end street. It really doesn't have a lot of traffic. So it wouldn't need to be giant, wide and fancy. Like I said, those funds can also go to other streets. We could do maybe three streets that need rehab instead of one street to completely reconstruct.
I think Caleb has something to say.
Not, not really. It's, it's just tough. I mean, because it also feels a little hypocritical too. Because every time somebody rebuilds a house or something, they have to put the sidewalks in and do it right. So it's just like, I need, I need to balance this.
Yeah. But if this city was going to put in a new street, a brand-new street that had not existed before, we would do it to full standards.
I mean, is, is there value to? Does it add value to a later project if you have a, a good bed and good asphalt that we've maintained better than we have in the past? Because obviously Enos hasn't been maintained other than when it was first, because there's a lot of streets like that. We have an intentional plan to maintain our streets now. So we should get more life out of it, so. So we should get more life out of it. So if you've got a grant, we wanted to make that, everything is a building block. I guess is my question. Can we find a little bit of peace about that?
I guess my, my thing is kind of like Sandy, do we want to spend a ton of money building it out to standards when it's a street that only has however many houses on it?
And I think that's what Councilor Shields is saying, is that feel good about, you know, we're not just gonna use 250,000 on a tiny portion of the block, we'll use it on the entire block and maybe some adjacent streets, knowing that when we go and want to make further improvements, we've already invested into that.
And I don't know if that's a realistic thought. I mean, twenty years down the road, will that road be buildable on top of, or are we gonna have to redo it?
Replace the base, yeah.
I mean, my guess is that we'd have to redo it all, so I feel like I'm blowing a little bit of smoke.
But also in the meantime, if we are trying to be representative, like what the people have asked us to deliver, that's really just a better drivable surface or safer navigating.
Well, let's buy the park at fifth and, the fourth in Enos is fantastic. Just, can we do that down the rest of these?
Well, the problem is, at least the end portion does need to start of a dig out and the base, rebase and start from scratch. So I think there is value, it is an investment in the longevity and the cost of upkeep. We'll use way less gravel in the potholes because there won't be any.
They can fill my church.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that enough for what you?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I, I, I do think it's enough. I, I mean, I mostly just want that conversation to be, be thought about. Especially as we think about, you know, road standards and transportation plans. And just to kind of call out that the transportation or the development code, right, calls for thirty-four feet wide pavement on all local roads.
There's like thirty-four feet down there.
In my personal opinion, it's not realistic for the way we've developed our housing or what we want and need. But that's a much bigger project to take on.
Yes.
Redoing the transportation plan. So we have a recommendation for a motion that would allow him to submit the application. But also I think if there were specific questions or uncertainties, Nathan could always come back to us for some clarification before that was submitted. We have until September or October?
The grant application will probably be submitted the beginning of August. I can check in at the August meeting.
Well, just that you would have the opportunity to like bring something.
And the grant agreement won't come back until October or so.
Motion to authorize city administrator to submit an application for an ODOT SCA grant to rebuild Enos Street and the surrounding area.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to authorize the city administrator to submit an application for an ODOT SCA grant to rebuild Enos Street and the surrounding areas. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. We have the tourism strategic plan. Councilor Thompson, as chair of the tourism committee, would you like to?
Over the last seven months, the Amity Tourism Committee has drafted a device of strategic plan that was first initiated in 2018. This document should sort of guide the city committees in work to enhance and respond to tourism. We simply did analysis of opportunities and constraints as well as goals to accomplish and measures of success.
I thought it looked great and I was very impressed.
This is fantastic compared to the old.
Yes, I, it was
Yeah.
No, it's good.
Every word.
It wasn't, it's amazing. I think it's great.
It's fantastic. The other tourism committee was, yeah, no comment.
Nope, as a, as a former chair of that committee, I just say kudos to you.
Very well done.
And they really took what they had started and then just like, we weren't starting from scratch, but we definitely
No, this is
It's great, yeah, it's great.
So yeah, I'm proud of them that we did and I'm excited to start.
As we should be. We should be very proud of it. I'm, I'm just, I'm tickled.
One thing that I really appreciate about the plan is that it has those measurable goals. We tried to make sure they were really realistic, but also something that we could keep checking back into. And I also personally like that some of the goals are just to make sure that it's, everything is done community-minded in making sure that people are comfortable and accepting and inclusive, like included into everything. Because we really want to enhance the good parts about our city and have everyone be able to be proud of that.
I move to adopt the tourism strategic plan put together by the Amity Tourism Committee.
Second. I have a motion in a second to adopt the tourism strategic plan put together by the Amity Tourism Committee. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. Before we move on to department reports, unfortunately, we received a letter of resignation from the chairperson of the Amity Day Committee. She's not able to fulfill her obligations at this time. So since this was a council-appointed position, I would just ask a motion to accept the resignation. And then we can let people know that we have the actual chair position open, or at least another voting member.
I move to accept the resignation of the Chair of the Amity Day Committee, Lori Hayhurst, resignation.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept Lori Hay. Hayhurst resignation. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. I think just in general, we need to let people know that there's lots of room for volunteerism to be a part of this committee. The committee is doing awesome. I've had the privilege of sitting in on a couple of meetings. Everyone's working really hard, but more hands would be helpful. With that last item of new business, we'll move into department reports. Nathan, we had your report and I know that you at least had one major thing you wanted to run through.
Yeah, if I can highlight really quick, I just want to say a big shout out to city staff. Mona and Tasha worked incredibly hard to find applicants for the city's summer maintenance position. And it was only thanks to their strong connection to the community that they tracked somebody down. Because we, we, we put out the notice and, and didn't receive much, but they, they eventually got two or three people to apply, right? And then they interviewed a couple of people and I think we have a good, good fit. So big thank you there. The, let's see. June had some travel, friends at Amity Library, excited about those. Friday, June twenty-eighth, the City and Citizen Advisory Committee, we did have that first kickoff meeting. Councilor Borkes was able to come. I, I thought it went really well. I was really pleased with how it went. That first meeting was mostly kind of an introduction of the project as well as feedback on a community engagement plan. So haven't dived too much into the comp plan itself, but more of how we're gonna talk to people about the comp plan.
I think there were some great ideas in that and some additional feedback that would be.
I think they, yeah, I, I, I think we came out of that with some great stuff to move forward. I know they're making changes to the, the survey that we talked about and, and we're gonna try, one of the things that I'm excited to try in the city is the kind of bulk mailing. We're gonna develop some postcards and then send them out to every door on the post route, if you will, for the city family. And so it'll be interesting to see what kind of response rate we get from that. If nothing, you know, could be that people ignore them, but we'll see. Hopefully we can get some good feedback there.
And utilizing QR codes and things for people to do surveys easily on their phone and more tech. And also still having paper surveys.
Very pleased there. And then you will see us for the comp plan at Amity Day. We're hoping to have a table there and be able to talk to people face-to-face about planning in Oregon. And then the other one kind of to add to this list is the Stephanie Craig from the Historic Landmarks Committee, and she's also on the Amity Day Committee. But she is a member of the Grand Ron Tribe and is very involved in historic and cultural resources and have strong feelings and a lot of knowledge in that area. She has been working with me to kind of put together almost like an archiving project, if you will, for some of the city's like older documents. So staff does a great job of keeping up on the, the records maintenance and keeping all the records there. But our kind of hope with an archiving project would be to like make certain pieces of it publicly accessible, right? Like so that if somebody wanted to, they could see the, the, or at least a digital scan of the ordinance book from eighteen eighty-eight and when their great-great-grandparent, you know, helped pass an ordinance in the city of Amity. Those kinds of things. And so there's some ideas, there's a couple of different foundations that we may apply for grants. I, I wanted to check in and see if there was any like opposition or any concerns about that kind of a project. And, and if there's not, then I'm probably going to apply for a couple of grants. One to like the Spirit Mountain Community Fund is a source for that style of grant. And then the Oregon Community Foundation is also a source for that style of grant too. And, and that would essentially provide for, you know, a consultant to do some archiving work, maybe some like physical materials of the like archiving boxes to put things in the the lead-free or the special folders and boxes and, and then to kind of help kick off that digital component of getting it all into a computer, getting it all so that we can allow people to see it remotely.
I would, I think that's great. And it also just sparked in my brain that we need to do a digital transition to the records we legally have to keep as well. So while you're out there like learning about that or like looking for great opportunities, that might be something to think about as well. I know it's like larger scale and more needing to be more secure.
Because Tasha and I have talked about some of it and how, you know, and a few, a few options for, you know, some of our more current records too.
Yeah. It was totally off topic, but I just wanted to keep that forefront of like, yes, this is cool. I think we should pursue it. But also we do have like an entire room of paper copies that I don't think we need all of.
Some things you still have to keep paper, even if you have digital, but
Yeah.
Some of it can be just digital. My only concern would be that it doesn't take away from getting a grant for something that's a goal. If it's the same company and that it doesn't take too much staff time.
Got it.
But other than that, I think it's a really great thing to have. I mean, honoring the history of Amity is what gets people excited as well and it has pretty good history.
General consensus there? Good. You should check it out. Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else to report?
I believe that was it for me, unless there's any questions on something that I missed.
Okay. Tasha, did you have anything to add? Okay, we saw reports from Greg and Anne, city engineering, billing reports, city attorney, planning. Any questions on those? No. Okay. Business from the mayor and city councillors. Comments for the good of the order. Council President Ike.
Amity Day is coming. We need all the volunteers we can get. So if you are able to help volunteer, we can use volunteers at the park starting to help set up at eight-thirty on the twenty-seventh. We can use people, are we gonna talk about parade? Are we doing parade?
Uh, I had it on my list, so.
And then we can also use people, what did we say that we were going to for the event that day?
Eleven to six.
Six. So we could use people back at the park at around six that evening to help clean up. So if you are available any time that day to help, but especially in the morning or the evening, that would be much appreciated.
It's on the calendar.
Thank you.
I'll be there.
All right, anything else? Any questions for Council President Ike? Okay, Councilor Borkes.
Nothing good.
Councilor McCarthy.
Nothing.
Councilor Shields.
Nothing to add.
Councilor Thompson.
Nothing.
Okay. My quick list. So Amity Day, yes, I would love it if the city council could walk in the parade together. Holding an Amity sign, I don't even know, handing out candy, just being together. Is that something that any or all of you are able and willing to do?
What time is the parade?
Ten AM, so it would be being at the elementary school at nine-thirty AM.
Maybe. I have prior plans for that day, but.
So it'd be about ten to ten-thirty, ten forty-five. It'd be done by eleven. I don't want to have to walk alone, but I will if I need to.
Do we have costumes?
I thought we could either just try to coordinate or get signs and we could talk about that at the work session. It'll be. Okay. We can buy shirts or something. I think we could figure that out. The other thing is that the next day is the pancake feed and at least a couple of weeks ago when I signed up, they still had open slots. So if anyone's interested in volunteering for that. But really for Amity Day, the plan is to be at the park all day, so I would love for you to join me in the parade. But if you can show up at the park, just hang out, be there, wear your name tag, that would be great. Pancake feed, if you're able to commit beforehand, just let the fire department know, they'll put you on a list. There's time slots, lots of different jobs.
Is the city also gonna have a table at the pancake feed? We had talked about it last year.
I don't, not unless there's something specific. I think it's, and we'll have one, but we'll have some stuff the day before. I think it's better to just help out.
I think that we talked about maybe doing a table at Amity Day next year. I think that that was kind of maybe a goal.
Oh, like just the city.
The city having a table next year at Amity Day, I think that would be
But you will have a comp plan table?
That's the plan, at least for, you know, John and I to be, our consultant and I to be talking about the comp plan.
But we can also have other business cards and
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can, I can stand at the table and communicate more stuff.
Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, council applications.
Like you can focus, yeah, you can focus your time on what you have planned and needs to, but that's another place where counselors could jump in.
It is, yeah. And Historic Landmarks Committee had also talked about potentially having a table there with some historic photos, historic resources.
What was that?
We've entered application on software.
To have a space. And then everything in this small town is related. Tasha touched on it in an email today, I think everyone got. But they will be rolling out the brand-new fire truck next Monday, the eighth, at seven. And Chief Yokum invited me and asked me to invite all of you personally at tonight's meeting to just join him down there to celebrate that. They have a very beautiful new They have a very beautiful new apparatus that was granted from the state.
Yay.
Um, so that's really something to celebrate, so the more people that can just show up and congratulate them and cheer, the better. Um, and I think.
We need to talk about, uh, work session.
Uh, that's not till August, so I thought we could talk about it.
You're right.
July.
I mean, it August.
Can I add one?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, um, we were hoping to plan a joint planning commission, city council session. So far, most of the word that I've received back from planning commission is that the fifteenth would be preferred.
Which day?
Monday, the fifteenth.
Oh, yeah, I won't be here.
Monday, July.
Yeah.
Oh, July fifteenth.
Yeah, yeah, Monday, July fifteenth.
Oh, that's like coming up.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't do that, I won't be there.
I can be.
I can be.
Are you comfortable with us proceeding without you two?
Yeah.
To talk about ADUs and short-term rentals.
That's fine. What time?
Um, I believe it's kind of open, but I probably around six, six would be preferred. I know one of the planning commissioners can't make it until six, so.
Let's do six PM then.
Six PM on Monday the fifteenth?
Yeah.
I I I don't know if we wanted to, you know, not do the seventeenth work session for a city council.
I feel like we need it, I know, well, I know for a fact we need it because there'll be things we need to discuss as a council leading up to Amity Day. Um, and then what, also, I will not be available for the August work session, neither will the council president, so we either will need to skip that or reschedule that one.
And Caleb, you're gone in August too, right? Are you gone in August this year?
Not in August.
Okay.
It'll be since September, but it won't be the whole month.
Okay.
Um, one other thing I don't want to forget is the next Amity Day committee meeting is planned for the tenth or eleventh. How soon do you need to notice that? It would be Wednesday or Thursday, right?
For that, is this like the opening day?
Yeah. Yeah, let's see, we we usually go a day or two, but.
Okay, seventy-two hours, so.
Seventy-two hours would be great.
Have you heard anything back from Jenna or anyone, have you emailed?
I haven't, I don't know if I've.
I've messaged and it was in that one email, um, so April or, I mean, we can just let staff know by the end of this week.
Yeah.
And make, you'll just need to make a decision, I guess.
If I'm in charge.
Co-chair. Who has risen to the occasion and it's appreciated, um, is there anything else for the good of the order? So I will ask for a final motion of the evening.
Listen to a joint.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you, good night.
Do you know when any of the, um, library happenings are?
I have it written right here, uh, June, two o'clock is the.